Call the meeting to order, roll call of Aldermen.
Mr. Heisler. Mr. Kinsella. Mrs. Holt. Mrs. Schmidt. Mr. Rudgewitz. Mr. Randall. Mr. Anthony. Mr. Davidson. Mr. Silsby. Mr. Hayden. Mr. Seibert. Mr. White. Mr. Galetti. Mr. Musgrove. Mr. Orlett. Ms. Schneider.
Here.
Roll call of departmental, first of all Alderman Heisler is excused, roll call of department heads.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. City Attorney Horner. Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle. Jamie Maitre. Tim Greggwoods. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Emily Foltz. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belleville. City Treasurer Dean Hart.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer. Jamie's still off, she's excused, and the first one was, I'm sorry?
Vaughn.
Ken Vaughn's on vacation today. They're all excused. At this time ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing I want to announce to everyone this evening is when you speak this evening, it's a must that you speak into the microphones. We did start, it will be on channel 989. Cables, channel 989. The council meetings will be aired starting the following day. They'll be on, and I think they're going to be on twice that week at least. But you can also still go to our web, and they'll be downloaded the next day as well to, you go to Belleville's website and you can link it. So you have two options, and that's up there indefinite, and they're also archived there. The biggest thing we found in cable, we met with them this past week. We did find a volume problem, so when you speak, whether it be at that center mic or whether it be Alderman, a lot of you were, couldn't hear you on the cable TV channel because you did not get into the microphone. So I'm going to ask you now to please do that so that we have much more quality and sound. And they're working on it as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what time you said, on channel 89?
I don't have the exact time, it'll be, it'll be posted on our web. You can call my office or Sharon Strauss by tomorrow, she's been working with Lyndon Wood. But I think it's, I'm sorry, Wednesdays and Sundays, and I don't know the exact time. They were establishing that. But it'll be Wednesdays and Sundays, it'll be on the air on channel 989. And we'll have that here next week, we'll have it posted. They were still working out some of the details. And then it's on our, it's still on our website the next day.
So they're just running rebroadcast instead of, it's not on live?
It's not on live, no. It'll be the broadcast, they still don't have large numbers of students in their department. It's just a growing program.
But eventually it'll be broadcast live too, just like the livestream, correct?
It's broadcast, it's not a livestream right now. We may get to that, but at the moment it's not right now.
Okay.
Okay? Yes ma'am.
How, since we run different times every time, how do they do their scheduling? Or are they editing it to fit a certain timeframe?
The biggest thing in the meeting I was there about was that they're working around all the sporting events that they are doing as well. But they felt that Wednesdays and Sundays, they're going to be able to pick an exact time it will be run. And I don't know if that's seven in the evening, I kind of thought it was. I'm pretty certain that's what it's going to be, but I don't want to sit here and have you walk out of here and say, he said.
No, that's not what I'm asking you, I'm asking you if it starts at seven, it might run till 9:30, it might run till 8:45.
Oh, they're, they're well aware that that's why they're trying to find a time when they don't have ballgames on certain nights, because they know our meetings could be anywhere from an hour to three hours. They're, they're well aware. So, so they're working on that. There's a large number of people here tonight, so I want to remind everyone, first of all, to really make sure we're all of good character as we speak. Speak into the mics, I also want to remind you of the emergency procedures. If we would have, heaven forbid, a fire or smoke or something present itself, I'd ask you all to very carefully and calmly leave the building, preferably by way of the front door that's open and the rear door. And then ask you to carefully cross the street and meet in front of the St. Clair County Courthouse sign so that we can get some kind of agreement that the people sitting next to you, yes, they're all out, the friends you came with, so that the firefighters, et cetera, don't have to be guessing. We'll never know exactly because we don't take an exact roll here, but we ask you to do that. If we have severe weather, the police officers, our staff will guide you right across from the clerk's office downstairs in the stairway to an area that we believe is a safe area to go to in storms, a storm shelter. So, with that, I'm going to, there's no public hearings this evening, I'm going to open public participation. I'm going to ask that you wait till you're called on, and that once I call you, come to the microphone, give your name and address. Try to keep your comments to about three minutes because there's a large crowd here tonight, and there's a lot of business. And I will begin the public participation now. Who'd like to go first? The gentleman in the back of the room. You'll be second.
Yeah, Rick Brown, 125 Lucia Lane, Shiloh, Illinois. It's been a real long time since I've been here, but the, I'm not dead, so that's a good thing. You guys got kind of a little pickle that you're going to be voting on tonight. And either way you go, there's going to be a problem. And there's a way to get around it. And it's, I believe it's legal, it's sound logic. You've got an area that was Zon C4, which does not allow single-family dwellings. There was a planned unit development contract that was done with the developers in the city for mixed use. Some commercial, some, you know, but some single-family. Now, it, the areas where these people built their single-family homes, they're single-family, including the home in question. They're not C4. I believe that the planned unit development document trumps the zoning. That's the whole idea. You couldn't have built any single-family homes in that area without that development. Now, since it can't be, it can't be both zonings, it's got to be, it's got to be one or the other. If it's C4, then every one of the single-family homes out there is a non-conforming use. And it might fall under the designation of some of the other non-conforming uses. If they ever become vacant for 12 months, they can't be reoccupied. Now, but if there's a vote taken on this thing, you either got to vote for the small residents or for people that don't want the small residents. If you vote against the small residents, there's probably going to be a federal lawsuit, and they will probably win. If you, if you side with the homeowners in this situation, what you're saying is that the property with the single-family dwelling on it is a non-conforming use because it requires a special use permit. And that doesn't do their property values any good. I don't think it's a great leap for an interpretation by the city attorney that it has been designated single-family, therefore all the rights and privileges go along with the single-family for all of those single-family homes. Therefore, no vote needs to be taken. The permit can be issued, they still have to follow all the guidelines. There wouldn't have to be a vote, the two Aldermen from the area wouldn't have to, gee, who am I going to vote for? Am I going to vote for the people here in a federal lawsuit, or am I going to vote for them, and there may be something else? You know, it takes not a big leap to get to that point. And I think with, on, on other times, when things like this have come up, I can recall a duplex that went in on 13th Street. And how the city backed off when I informed the land development that there was a section in the ordinance that said that that home could, that duplex could be built there without a variance. They refunded the guy his money, and, you know, they let him get a permit to build. I don't think that's, you know, my daddy always told me, the best way to stay out of a fight is not to be there. And I, all it would take is go into executive session before the vote, mull this over a little bit, and it's, it's not a big jump at all. They're either single-family homes or it's C4. And if it's C4, they're non-conforming uses. That makes problems for the homeowners. Thank you.
Sir, you were next.
Thank you, I'm John Delaplane, I live in O'Fallon. And I'm going to speak to the opposition group as a parent tonight, parent to parent, as my son is one of the proposed residents of the facility. The residents of the facility are there not because they're disabled, but rather the opposite. It's because in the group home setting, they're able to function as normal adults, and they go to work, and they are productive people. My son, for example, works during the day and he comes home at night, he has plenty of activities that, that go on. The house provides those kinds of activities for the residents. They function as a family. They've lived together for 20 years, and they've been good citizens together. The staff also functions as a family with the group. So four of the 16 are moving to a new facility in this case. They are all good citizens, they've all proven themselves to be good citizens of Belleville. Our son, I feel like, is an ambassador for development, developmentally-disabled people. He's out working, he pays his own way, he's active in the community, and again, he's been a good citizen. Now, the second concern that I heard was regarding JJR and TLD. About 20 years ago, the group of parents got together to select a developer for our group home. We picked the group JJR to build the facility and run it. They've done so successfully for 20 years. Nobody's closer to what's going on with this house than the parents are. We understand the needs of the neighborhood, and we understand the needs of the residents. We've watched JJR run the facility for 20 years. Tanya was the operating officer, if you will, or the administrator for the home and for others. They've done a great job, and the parents will tell you that they've done a great job for our children. Now, TDL is simply the successor group to JJR. Again, for the past two years, for the parents, it's been a seamless transition. They've done a great job in running the facility, and the parents and the guardians are happy with that, with the job that they've done. You don't have a worry with the, with the corporate view, if you will, where you might have a concern. This is a local company, and they've performed for us very well. Now, the third concern that I heard was that several people felt like that they were not getting what they needed from the city of Belleville. Well, you have to ask yourself the question, would I allow the city or my neighbors to tell me where I could live? Fortunately, the answer is pretty simple. There is a public law that tells you that there's fairness in housing, so that your neighbors don't tell you that you can't move into a facility. And these four have that same right. So we hope that over the last three weeks that you've educated yourself somewhat on what developmental disabilities are. If you feel like you need to throw a stone, then go ahead, we've heard those before. But if you have something constructive, something that adds to the conversation here, then we welcome that, and we'd love to hear it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
My name's Paul Dutton, I live at 2572 Winter Creek Drive. I'm on the board of the Homeowners Association, and we are not against developmentally challenged. Our problem is the way that the corporation went about it. We have got a lot of questions that we have not been able to get answered. Of the questions that we need answered are, was that house purchased under false pretenses? My understanding is the covenants are part of that deed and the purchase process. The covenants say what we can do as a neighborhood. And the other question we have is, if the city granted an exception to that C4 zoning to put in a public unit development on single-family lots, that was all done in writing, now you're coming back and doing, making an exception to that exception. To me, that first exception being put in writing was a contract. Now, when this contract is violated, we've got 168 residential units in this homeowners' association that we feel we are being violated. By coming in and rezoning in a homeowners' association, what you are doing is gutting the homeowners' association. We pay our fees, we all get along happy, we are multicultural, and we have never been against people with disabilities of any sort. We have disabled people in our neighborhood. We get along fine. Our question is, single-family lots. Another question is, how can the city issue a CO on this property? When initially it was going to be said, four males, unrelated, developmentally handicapped. Now it's two females, two males. Doesn't meet, they're not related, does not meet the definition of family.
Okay, sir.
Okay?
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, my name's Monica Sobczek, and I've lived in Belleville all my life. I have a lot of concerns that the council needs to also be concerned about. There's a lot of unanswered questions. I have two disabled, developmentally-disabled sisters who live at the Murray Center in Centralia. The governor, the, TDL talked about a mandate that they're downsizing facilities and moving people into the community. One of my concerns is, this is one person making these decisions to downsize. There already is a federal lawsuit and a state lawsuit against the state of Illinois for the way they're going about it. They're not allowing choice. So I have concerns for all parties involved. I want to make sure that everything is expressed and all questions are answered. I think it's going to take a little time to get these questions answered. I have concerns for the disabled that are being moved. I want to make sure that they're not being forced to move because that they're saying, oh, you have, we have to move, you have to move because this is a mandate. TDL receives compensation for every person, the state of Illinois is receiving federal dollars to move people out of huge institutions into community settings without our choice. They're not, they're not giving us a choice. The federal lawsuit is not over, the only thing that has been ruled on is the injunction. So there's a lot more to rule on in the federal lawsuit. Rushing this decision, I, I'm, I'm in favor of tabling the decision until a lot of answers can, questions can be answered. First, for the city of Belleville, you know, there's a monetary reason that these folks are moving, okay? So I don't want anybody to be misled in saying that it's something, there's a law or the state is mandating this. Governor Quinn's committee that he put together to review closures of the larger facilities voted to keep them open. They're kind of stuck now because they have to go by what the parents want. And we would like, my sisters unfortunately aren't as high-functioning as some of, as the residents in this facility. My sister was turned down in this facility because she has behavior, behavior issues. My concern that the council needs to be concerned about is, you've got the 16-bed facility, you've got the four-bed homes that'll be springing up everywhere. Yes, everybody has a right to live in the community. I, there is no, nothing wrong about that. My problem is, they're telling people that they need to close down these 16-bed facilities, and they really don't. They're getting a monetary, which they pass on to the individuals like TDL and the companies. So they're going to get money for these four individuals to move out of that 16-bed into the two-bed, into the two-to-four bed? And what can happen is, they can move those folks out of that home and move an additional four in there, and they'll get compensation. So what's going on here is they're using the developmentally-disabled as pawns and moving them all around. So I want to make sure that it's clear that they're not being forced somewhere. You know, I can understand that they want their own room and they want to leave, but I'm concerned with that. And then you've got, you've got the city's housing ordinance that you have to look at, you've got zoning that you need to look at, and you really need this neighborhood group to have an opportunity to discuss it with an attorney on their covenant that they have. So I still think there's a lot of unanswered questions and things that need to be worked out before there's three lawsuits and it's a mess. So I think this is something that needs to be thought about a little bit more, and I would like to be a part of that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. As the council's aware, the Belleville.net website is hosted by Civic Plus. What the council may not know is that Ferguson, Missouri's website is also hosted by Civic Plus. On Saturday, a denial-of-service attack was launched against Ferguson's website, which took down all websites on Civic Plus that they were hosting, including the Belleville.net website. I want to say Civic Plus did an admirable job of isolating and redirecting the traffic that was directed at Ferguson's website as to then bring back all, the Belleville.net and all other websites. And that they should be commended that they did a good job, and we're back online within a matter of an hour and a half. Thank you.
Yep, did a good job. Yes, sir.
I'm John Laker, Swansea, Illinois. To the mayor, Mayor Eckert, and the Aldermen and Alderwomen of Belleville, I offer a few simple thoughts for your reflection. Quoting from the Declaration of Independence, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal, and they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights; that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Persons with disabilities come in all shapes and sizes, all ages, races, and differing backgrounds. They come with a variety of gifts and talents, as well limitations and challenges. And that is true of all of us. And just as you and I have a right to live as good citizens where we choose, so does each person with a disability. Your choice is very simple. You need to say yes and move on. The request by TDL group is a reasonable one. If we're not a reasonable one, you could pause or say no. But it is reasonable. And delaying or saying no only hurts the city and the persons that this group is meant to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Eric Owens, I live in Greymount, Minnesota Division. I would just like to, you know, to have people just stick to the facts. If it was that easy, you wouldn't have needed a special zoning permit in the first place to get into the subdivision, or to get in that area, period. People keep bringing up the, you know, the disable part of it. And I wish that you all would just stick to the zoning part of it. You know, it has nothing to do with the disabled. It's where the location is. You need the permit, there's no throwing stones. It's, it's that, you know, like I say, it's a law in place where you, that you guys have to come down here to get a special permit to get in that area. Let's, let's stick to that part of it, and let's stick to the, to the integrity of TDL. Instead of bringing your kids into it, let's just stick to the, to the aspects of TDL group as a whole, as far as the application, saying they didn't know about the school being right there. Let's just stick with that, and then maybe we can get somewhere.
Seeing the other hands, I'm going to get ready to close public participation. Going to move on to the next item of business under number seven on the agenda is presentations, recognitions, and appointments. Tonight, I ask for a motion, I'm recommending to appoint to the Downtown Development and Redevelopment Commission for a four-year term, Mr. Jeff Renner. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Epstein.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the approval of the minutes, the regular city council meeting, August 4, 2014. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Motion to approve and file, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Seibert, the motion was by Alderman Schmidt. Are there any additions or corrections? Yes, ma'am.
Page eight, I would like it written into there that both Mr. Kinsella and Mr. Langerman are serving by virtue of their positions, and we're not appointed as individuals.
That's fine. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, in our discussion...
Please use the microphone if you can.
Yes, in our discussion, when I was talking last time, I asked about FOIA and some other things, and you, I want to say, use the word rude, but I won't. I will say, there was a way that you stated that you didn't like the way I spoke. You said you were tired of my rude comments and that. I'm not here to be in etiquette class or kindergarten class to learn how to speak. I'm here to stand up and speak for the people. And as long as I don't use vulgar language or anything like that, I feel you have no right to tell me how to speak, especially at the beginning of each month, you preach a word to us. And here you went and did the opposite. Sometimes we have to raise our voices, sometimes we have to say the way it is. We are here at a meeting, city meetings, discussing things. I'm quite sure if you went to Springfield or Washington, you're not going to see them doing little etiquette classes, well, now you have to speak like this, oh, you can only talk like this. That's wrong. We're here at city meetings, and there is no ordinance stating that we have to abide by your word of the month when you don't. That was rude for you to talk to me like that. I was talking, I talked to a whole group. You made your comment to one, me, and that was wrong, and it's not stated in the minutes. And I wanted to reflect that.
May I ask, how do you want that worded so we can get it right? I mean, really, how do you want that put in the minutes?
Well, the mayor should not, if he's going to preach these words of the month, that he should practice what he preaches.
I don't think that was part of the recorded minutes, though. That's not what was said last night.
I'm going to, okay?
The minutes, excuse me, I'm still talking.
Yes, and this...
The minutes are a reflection of what happened at the last meeting, okay?
It happened.
And the way you're stating it is not, it's your opinion right now, it's not how it happened at the last meeting, so.
All right, I will make a comment now. I am asking for an audio copy and a video copy of the last meeting, so I will have it approved exactly what was said, word for word.
And is there a particular part of the meeting we're talking about?
Yes, it was under the unfinished business in that one we were talking.
It's on the web. And, and, are you, are you through, Mrs. Schneider?
So, you're saying I can't have it?
I'm saying that I'm...
You're saying I have to get it on my own?
I haven't said anything yet, and I think this is why we probably got in this predicament. I'm simply saying Alderman Cincella was recognized and raised the question, exactly what do you want the minutes to reflect so that we can vote on them?
Exactly how you spoke to me.
Excuse me, Your Honor, could I ask Alderman Schneider to jot down the wording she'd like, and maybe we can come back to this issue later in the meeting? Would that be all right?
Well, I, I will...
Because, I mean, we really have to get the wording right, how you want it worded.
And quite honestly, I think all of us would probably gonna have to go back and look at that tape, because my job as the moderator is to keep the meeting going and be respectful and try to recognize all people. I think during a very difficult meeting two weeks ago, I'm not patting myself on the back, but we kept it going, and I think I was respectful to all.
Your Honor, I, I'll make a motion that we postpone approval of the minutes to give Ms. Schneider a chance to look at those records, and then we can bring it back next meeting, and we can end this discussion and see what she wants to insert and be done with it.
So, we have a motion to postpone tonight's approval of the minutes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Sillsby, that's fine, and then Alderman White was going to also. So, we have a motion, a second, to postpone tonight's regular city council approval of the minutes from August fourth until the next meeting.
And I withdraw my motion, too.
Okay. All in favor of approving postponement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Your Honor, could we have requests that whatever changes are gonna take place, that that's in writing to the Alderman before the meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure. We move on. Claims, payroll, and dispersments, what's your pleasure? Yes, ma'am.
I move that we accept and file the claims, payroll, and dispersments.
We have motion by Alderman Schmidt to pay the claims and payroll and dispersments. We have a second. Second by Alderman Seibert, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Cincella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports, we have zoning board of appeals reports.
Number one, August fourteenth, Cheller Tool and Die, requesting an area bulk variance in order to expand the existing facility onto Seventeen North Florida Avenue. The applicant has requested to increase the maximum lot coverage from seventy-five percent to one hundred percent and to decrease the front, side, and rear setback requirements from twenty-five feet each to zero feet each. The property is located in a D-two heavy industry old district.
Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve this as presented.
I second.
Motion by Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Schmidt, to approve the zoning board's recommendation and have the proper ordinance drawn, is that correct?
Yes.
Any additional questions, comments? All, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to comment to the clerk, thank you to whoever changed the font for the recommendations from the zoning that makes it much easier to narrow in on things.
Yeah, it's good.
We have a motion, we have a second, to approve this recommendation from zoning and have the proper ordinance drawn. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Number two, case fifty, August fourteenth, Cheller Tool and Die, requesting a use variance in order to expand the existing parking lot at Eight Florida Avenue onto the property at Twelve Florida Avenue, which is located in A-one, single-family zoning district.
I move we grant this request and have ordinance drawn.
I second.
Motion by Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion on the second motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion just stated and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Number three, case fifty-one, August fourteenth, Suzanne Smith, Suzanne's Missing Pieces, requesting a sign installation permit in the area of special control in order to place one flush-mounted sign tooling thirty square feet at One-O-four East Main Street located in the C-two heavy commercial zoning district.
We have a motion by Alderman Seibert, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Second by Alderman White, do I hear discussion?
I think, what Melinda brought up, that might've been a great idea, but I think these recommendations are switched, Julie?
They are. That's right. They're both still unanimous recommendation, but you're, you're exactly right.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and a motion and a second to approve case number fifty-one and have the proper ordinance drawn. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Number four, case fifty-two, August fourteenth, James Huttonhausen, requesting an area bulk variance in order to build a carport at the end of the house, six inches from the side of the property line at Five Thirty Garden Boulevard, located in A-one, single-family residential zoning district.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Seibert, do I hear discussion? All in favor of having case number fifty-two approved and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have a housing report of cash receipts for fiscal year two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen. What's your pleasure?
I move we accept and file.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, accept and file, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman?
Pending audit, correct?
Pardon?
Pending audit.
Well, everything gets audited.
It wasn't in the motion, but...
Well, he said accept and file. When you file it, it's gonna be audited.
Okay.
Well, we have a motion to accept, file, and audit the housing report. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have a solicitor's license request for William D. Neiman to solicit AT&amp;T U-verse. Can we do them both together?
No.
Want them separate? We'll do them separate. Do I have a motion to bring it on the floor?
Aye.
You're making a motion to approve the solicitor's request for William D. Neiman? Do I hear a second?
No, not to approve. You said, are we voting on these?
I just asked, I'm sorry. So, your motion, your motion is to deny?
Yes.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second to deny?
I will second.
Alderman, Randall seconds it. We have a motion and a second to deny William D. Neiman solicitor's license. Any conversation? You might notice in your packet that the police chief now is reviewing him. I believe he put a recommendation in there, correct? Chief Sparker, I think Chief has stepped out, and his recommendation was not a problem with this, was it? What, what did, what did it say? I didn't...
He said, he said that he would recommend it be approved.
Okay. So, we did provide that additional step that I promised you I would look into, talk to the chief, and we got that worked out. So, the police chief is recommending, it is approved. We have a motion and a second to deny. I'm gonna call, I'm sorry.
I have a question for the attorney. This is kind of a, it's not personnel, but this is a personal issue. I feel uncomfortable discussing this in open session.
It's, it's not a, excuse me, it's not a matter of, of employment, so, as far, are you concerned about an invasion of personal privacy?
Yeah.
Well, I'd have to look, but I don't see an exception that would cover that. I think when they make application publicly, they put that type of information, it's, uh, subject to public scrutiny.
So, we have a motion and a second to deny. I'm gonna call for a roll call.
You're all right? You're, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Looking at this application even in more detail, I under, I respect the police chief, but there's, I see a lot of concerns there.
So, Mrs. Schneider?
Yes, um, so we can talk about this. I mean, when you've got the record that this guy has, I don't want him over in our neighborhood selling, I mean cannabis, I mean...
Well, first of all, make sure when you look at that report, that you're not just looking at what's been charged and what's been prosecuted, uh, in all fairness. Make sure that you read it through, because you get those, 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 those reports back, and many people have been charged, but if they haven't been prosecuted, they're innocent until proven guilty. Now, I don't have it in front of me at the moment, but I'm just reminding it.
Does it not say guilty there?
I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not, I'm just passing that on, is the simple thing. We have a motion and a second to approve this...
No, to deny.
To deny.
To deny it, I'm sorry, to deny it. Alderman Schmidt?
Well, you know, in reading it, he does have, you know, at first glance, it is cause for concern, but I do respect Lieutenant Colonel Sparker's opinion, the arrests are not like they have...
It was Chief Clay's opinion.
Chief Clay, and they did, it's not like this happened yesterday. He could've turned his life around.
Well, it's a possibility.
And if the police are recommending it, um, if we had any complaints about him, he would be arrested. I mean, it seems like he, you know, it has been a while since he was arrested.
Well, and, and you understand...
An arrest is not conviction.
We, arrest is not always conviction, sometimes it is, and, and we do look at, you know, the number of years, how recent, et cetera. It's the same thing I go through when I look at liquor licenses. Uh, I have to judge that, and the city attorney and I review that very carefully. Okay, we have a motion to deny and a second. All in favor of denying this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Aye.
Let's go back and do a roll call. Roll call and aye vote is to deny.
Cincella.
Nope.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
No.
Ridgewitz.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
No.
Davidson.
No.
Sillsby.
No.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
No.
Orlett.
No.
Schneider.
Aye.
Yes, eight to seven.
So, the...
It fails. That motion fails.
It, motion fails. We go on to the next one.
So, do we have to make a motion to approve his license now?
Yes, yes, you would, I'm sorry.
Okay. Can I make a motion to approve the solicitor license request for William D. Neiman to solicit AT&amp;T U-verse?
We have a motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Anthony, do I hear any further discussion? Yes.
Was it William D. Neiman that we just voted on?
Well, we voted to deny him, now we have a motion to approve. Okay?
He approved it.
So, roll call, aye vote is to approve him. Uh, all in favor, I mean, uh, roll call.
Cincella.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
No.
White.
No.
Galetti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Same vote, isn't it?
Same exact vote.
Okay, motion carries. We now go on to the second solicitor. I'd ask for a motion to approve the request for Charles I Richards to solicit investments for Edward Jones.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Ridgewitz, I have any discussion? All in favor of approving this solicitor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Your Honor, if I may, I'll please note that I'm abstaining on the vote because I'm in the business.
Okay, and that's good, good to point out your reason for abstention. Alderman Cincella.
I'd like to consider approval of the development agreement with Mac Medical for the remodeling of the existing facility located at three twenty-five West Main, and I so moved.
Motion by Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Schmidt, discussion? Roll call.
Cincella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Cincella.
Ask that we consider approval of development agreement with Pro Pack Testing Laboratory Incorporated for a warehouse addition at twenty-three eighty-five Amen Drive, and I so moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman, uh, Cincella, second by Alderman Seibert, discussion? Roll call.
Cincella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Alderman Anthony, will make the following motion for master sewer.
Thank you, your honor. On behalf of the master sewer committee, I'd like to make the following recommendations, following motions as a group, if nobody...
Anybody object, there's two motions there?
No, that's good.
Go ahead.
First motion, accept the dispersment request number one from Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for the East Creek Watershed SSO relief improvements in the amount of $240,319.54. Second motion reads as to accept the engineering proposal from Tubman, Wade, and Brooklyn Incorporated in the amount of $936,805 for the long-term control plan phase four, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Anthony, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Belleville and the National Recreation and Park Association regarding a grant from the American Water Company, Water Charitable Foundation for the Bellevue Park Nature Play Area Project. So moved, your honor. Motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Davidson, any discussion?
I'd like to hear Debbie Belleville or Jason or somebody expand on this a little bit.
Well, okay. Eric.
This is a grant we received from the, excuse me, American Water Charitable Foundation. It's part of a new program they're rolling out. They want either water-related or natural play-related projects. This, and I did put a little thing in your packet, they're asking, and we don't promote this really until they want to do a coordinated press release, so Jacqueline, don't tweet this right now.
But it was a hundred and nine... But they need a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, they wanted to make sure all the memorandums of understanding are in. But this will have about twenty to thirty different elements in it. There'll be, again, there's some photos and descriptions in your packet. There'll be a climbing wall into the side of the hill at Bellevue Park by the Stone Lodge. There'll be a slide, an embankment slide that's part of it, natural obstacle course, a net climber, some other interpretive signage and things related to butterflies and fish and the ducks and things out there to tie into the park and the water features there, so.
We're getting all of this for...
Hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Darling.
Did you do the grant application?
I wrote it, there were, I have heard estimates, they were anywhere between a hundred and ten and a hundred and fifty applications, and only four were awarded throughout the entire country.
Yay, yay, Eric. Thank you, this is darling, this is wonderful.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second.
And what's the funding source?
The foundation, the American Water Charitable Foundation.
No, 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 our portion.
We don't have a match.
There's no match. There's no match at all.
There's no match.
Wow.
That's really nice.
We have a motion and we have a second. Roll call.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion at this time to approve the Cunningham Recreation Game Time bid for the purchase of Playground Project for Bicentennial Park, awarded grant from St. Clair County Parks. The Us Communities Program is a non-for-profit government purchasing cooperative project totaling as $28,670.85, and this also is no match, correct Debbie? This is also no match. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kinsella, discussion.
This is, there's...
There's no match for this either.
So they're just giving us the twenty-eight thousand for the...
For this specific project. Okay?
Okay, so the flower talk too, there's one kid on one side of the playground and they're talking to...
My telephone.
Oh, how cute is that?
Well, I'm glad we like it. Okay. I liked it, but I thought it was just me. Okay, and I think you can all see, we have a motion, we have a second, to approve and accept this grant. Roll call.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet. Schneider.
No.
The ayes have it. What I was gonna say before I took the vote, I think you can see our staff is very aggressive about constantly planning, going after grants, and trying to enhance our community for our citizens and visitors. So thank you Debbie and Eric and Jason and all the people involved, keep up the good work.
And this totally fits in with the nature, the whole concept.
Yes, it does, it fits in with that whole park. Alderman Seibert.
Yes, your honor, I recommend this on the Streets and Grades Committee, I'd like to read one through four and six through eight, and have them voting on it one.
Nobody objects, let's do one through four first.
Number three, we have to correct because we have the wrong bidder.
Oh, the bidder in there, please note the typo, it's Hanks.
Yeah, it's Hanks.
And the amount is also one eighty-one...
Nine seventy-eight sixty.
Nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty cents. We caught this the other day, but then it didn't get corrected like we thought it did. So it's Hanks. Number three of the three, of the first four that we're gonna ask for the motion here.
Well, I'll second if you want to do one through, one through four and six, seven, eight, and we're skipping five.
As a group.
Does nobody oppose to that? Let's do one through, let's do one, two, three, four, six, seven, and eight. Alderman Seibert, you're making a motion to approve them?
I'm not second.
And we have a second.
Consider approval of low bidder Hanks in the amount of $255,572.28 for East C Street. South Eighth Street, consider approval of low bidder Hanks in the amount of $634,404.15. Two, Asphalt Patch, 2014, approved by the low bidder Hanks in the amount of $181,978.60. Freeburg Avenue Roundabout, motion to approve Kaskaski Engineering for design and construction modification in the amount of $29,600. West C Street, motion to approve Volker Inc. in the amount of $16,700, Real Estate Services. West C Street, motion to approve Volker Inc. in the amount of $9,546, parking lot. And number eight, Street and Alleyway between Erna and Jesse Street, motion to approve two lights to be installed on two existing poles, monthly cost for 250 watt, sodium vapor will be fifteen dollars and seventy-four cents a month for each. So moved, your honor.
Second, your honor.
Motion by...
Your honor, it's, hold on, Alderman Seibert, item seven is only retroactive once item six is...
We understand that, yes. Everybody understand that? Seven, under seven, it's based on approving the real estate services. We have a motion by Alderman Seibert, a second by Alderman Hayden, to approve those items coming from Streets and Grades, one, two, three, four, skipping five, six, seven, and eight. Alderman Holt, you have a question?
No, I have a statement. Number one, the EC project, you said it's actually TIF twelve, not three.
I'm sorry, it was TIF twelve, we corrected that in committee. I caught that when I looked at it, it's not TIF three, that money is coming and being funded, that project out of TIF twelve. Sherman Street, TIF. Okay, thank you, that is a correction. And you accept that, the gentleman, that, okay, that helps. We have a motion, we have a second to approve those seven items from Streets and Grades, roll call.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion's carry. At this time, we sneak over to communications.
No, we go back to number five.
Go back to number five. Alderman Seibert.
Alderman, five, make a motion to refer it to Traffic Committee.
We have a motion by Alderman Seibert. Second by Alderman Hayden. Discussion. All in favor to refer back to the Traffic Committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, communications, number twelve. A, communication from Chiramet to hold their fifth annual Chiramet 5K run walk in their third annual Main Street Mall on January 24th, 2015, at Lindenwood at 9:00 a.m. Two police officers will be needed again along with the wonderful help from the Street Department.
Read them all.
Read them all.
B, communication from Children's Dyslexia Center, Southern Illinois, Scottus Wright Charity, recognizing their annual walk to be held October 11th, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. C, communication from Night Moves of Belleville at 900 McClintock Avenue to hold their ninth annual anniversary party on August 23rd, 2014. They would like to close the road from the corner of McClintock and Wabash from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and they will need six barricades. D, communication from Taverno Main, requesting the use of the patio and picnic tables at the corner of Church Street and East Main Street to host Diva Night Thursday, August 21st, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. They would like to reserve the space and the portion of Church Street from the alley southeast Main Street for safety purposes. They will take responsibility for cleaning the area and place all trash in our dumpster.
I'll make a motion, your honor, to approve communications A through D.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
On the picnic tables and that, does the Parks Department charge them for the use of these tables?
We've not charged the Main Street Group for Diva Night in the past, they've only asked a couple times, but we've not. It helps the businesses downtown, the small businesses, we've not charged them. Do we have a motion, and we have a second? All in favor approving these four communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions, we have none. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to read by title only, resolutions thirty-one ninety-eight and thirty-one ninety-nine. All in favor of reading those two resolutions by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A, resolution number thirty-one ninety-eight, a resolution whereas the City of Belleville Art on the Square is sponsoring their event May 14th through 17th, 2015. B, resolution number thirty-one ninety-nine, a resolution whereas the Art on the Square is sponsoring a Wine, Dine, and Jazz Festival in the City of Belleville on June 26th, 27th, 2015.
Motion to approve resolution thirty-one ninety-eight, thirty-one ninety-nine, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Hayden, any discussion? Yes.
I would like to point out that the paper that's attached to it that shows the route still has the dates from last year on both of them, I'm sure somebody just grabbed that and made a copy, so those have to be updated.
And these dates here, I think, reflect the new dates.
Yes, these are the correct dates, but the ones on these...
So that apparently the attachment was grabbed inappropriately, or...
Right, well, I can say all that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve these two resolutions with the correct dates that are in the agenda. Roll call.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinances number seventy-eight oh one, seventy-eight oh two, seventy-eight oh three, and seventy-eight oh four.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear discussions about these ordinances? All in favor of reading by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A, ordinance number seventy-eight oh one is zoning ordinance in regard to case number forty-nine, August 14th, Cheller Tool. Ordinance number seventy-eight oh two is zoning ordinance in regard to case number fifty, August 14th, Cheller Tool. D, ordinance number seventy-eight oh three is zoning ordinance in regard to case number fifty-one, August 14th, Suzanne Smith, Suzanne's missing pieces. E, ordinance number seventy-eight oh four is zoning ordinance in regard to case number fifty-two, August 14th, James Huttonhausen.
Motion to approve ordinance number seventy-eight oh one, seventy-eight oh two, seventy-eight oh three, and seventy-eight oh four, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert, to approve those four ordinances as just read, any discussion? Roll call.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion's carried, unfinished business. Zoning Board of Appeals Advisory Report.
Case forty-eight, July 14th, TDL Group Incorporated, requesting a special use permit in order to use the property at 212 Turning Leaf as a community-integrated living arrangement for four unrelated adults with intellectual disabilities in a C-four commercial district.
I move to accept this.
If I could, before, I just wanted to again reiterate my recommendation at the last meeting that if you desire to discuss any legal theories or consequences of probable or imminent litigation, including potential liability, that you do so in executive session.
Your honor, if I may, I'd move that we go into executive session.
Second.
Okay, we, I didn't recognize the motion yet, so... We have a motion, but Alderman handled to go into executive session for the purpose of...
Probable.
Prominent or imminent litigation. We have a second, by who? Alderman Schneider. Do we have any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of going into executive session for the stated reasons just given, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, from the regular session, we're on to item number sixteen, unfinished business. Mr. Clerk, do you want to go ahead and read this zoning board of appeals advisory report?
Sure.
Case forty-eight, July 14th, TDL Group Incorporated, requesting a special use permit in order to use the property at 212 Turning Leaf as a community-integrated living arrangement for four unrelated adults with intellectual disabilities in a C-four commercial district.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt to approve. Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Ridgewitz. Discussion. Alderman White.
Yes, your honor, thank you. I'm going to object to this, I'm going to vote no on it, I'll tell you that right now. And my reason for doing that is because I believe that TDL, TDL as a company did not act in really good faith with neighbors, potential neighbors, in the, in the development. They bought a piece of property knowing that it was in a subdivision with covenants like I did twenty years ago. And as doing that, I believe that when you buy a piece of property in a land with covenants, you will adhere to all the covenants. Having not done that part of it, they, at this point, have not discussed anything prior to bringing it to the zoning board with the existing homeowners association. I find this to be worrisome to me, as a neighbor, as a potential neighbor. I live in an area, as I said, with a homeowners association, I would not be necessarily opposed to having a group home in my neighborhood, but I would like to know about it, like to have the discussion, and find out about it before I went to the zoning meeting.
Okay.
They did not look at, I mean, there are, there are a plethora of houses available in the City of Belleville that are not subject to homeowners association, and I think this is, that's my objection to the request, thank you.
Alderman Schmidt?
Okay, as Alderman Ward two, the current home that they have the sixteen residents in is in my ward, I've talked to some people in the neighborhood, they've never been a problem. And they don't, but they don't need to do that, they're considered a single-family home, and if the covenants were restrictive and, you know, weren't legal, they don't have to notify every single person and get permission. And I think we need to vote on it, let these people move into their home, and grant the variance that they're entitled to. Anywhere else in the city, we would not be having this discussion. But they choose, then they can live wherever they want, and they chose to live in that home, and they have that right to, and for that reason, I would vote yes and urge others...
Alderman Hayden next, and then Alderman Schneider.
Yes, your honor. My concerns, I certainly understand that they have a right to, to live there, yet what has happened in the past with city, with group homes, I have discussed with numerous people, you know, with this council, and our legal advice, et cetera. These group homes are under compliance of federal law, they are compliant under Illinois state law, they are under compliance of our local laws, including the Fair Housing Act. I have yet to see anything, and the local government is the last safe haven to make sure all is done and safe, and I've yet to have anybody tell me from our staff if, under the Fair Housing Act, this, this group home has to have the appropriate fire and smoke protection laws, if it does need a sprinkler system, does it have a sprinkler system? When you're dealing with, even though it's a single-family, it's a group home with individuals, that, that enacts various state and local laws as it relates to food preparation, are we, and is that home going to be in compliance with those, those type of laws? As well as, I've had nobody tell me yet if this house has the appropriate ingress, egress of the American Disabilities Act code, as well as access to bathrooms, and appropriate egress from the bedrooms in case of a fire or other peril. And I took a note, uphold all the laws of the federal, state, and local government, and although this may not pertain to their zoning application in question, I think it is remiss upon us to allow any type of living situation until we have all people, those living in it and those living next to it protected, and I don't have those answers.
Alderman Schneider, I said you'd be next.
Yes. The reason I would vote no is...
Please use the microphone, okay?
The reason I would vote no is because there's not enough answers. I want to amend the motion that we postpone this, and that all parties, attorneys, our people, whoever is doing the talking, that they get together and keep us informed of what's going on and bring this back at another date. That, I would like to amend the motion.
So your motion is to postpone to what date?
Are they amending my motion, no, our motion? Okay, I, I would prefer we vote separately on them.
Well, hold it. Hold it, I mean, attorney?
In the order of things, a motion to postpone would take precedence over the ultimate motion, so I would ask, I would suggest that you consider the motion to postpone first.
But with the motion to postpone, is there a time period on that, Alderman Schneider? What's your time period of postponing, to the next meeting?
Um, do we think that is enough time for all people to get together?
You, you made the motion, you tell us.
The next four weeks, not the next city council meeting, the following one, because that would only be two weeks. I say four weeks.
So you, your motion, and Alderman Gilletti, do you agree with that? So you have a motion to postpone for?
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
And then we should be able to have a decision, all questions answered, as Alderman Hayden was.
Which will be the second, second meeting of September.
Yes, sir.
We. Okay, that motion is what's on the floor right now, the postponement.
Okay, I also have a lot of questions that I, in open session and in executive session, were not answered. I do not believe they are answerable this evening. I believe it is premature that we are being pressured, and it is the wisest course to postpone this.
Concur. Alderman Schmidt?
Okay, well, I disagree respectfully. I think that the motion, it was on the agenda at the last meeting, and Alderman Gilletti then wanted to get it moved to the end of September, and I don't see why, I, you know, the question, the attorney was not hired this past week, the questions are still going to be there, and I, I think we need to vote for the variance and do the right thing, and let these people move into their home, which they're legally entitled to do. Thank you.
Anyone else before we call? We have a motion, I'm calling a roll call for an a vote motion, with, with a vote to postpone to the second meeting of September. Roll call.
Kinsella.
No.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
No.
Ridgewitz.
No.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
No.
Davidson.
No.
Sillsby.
No.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
No.
White.
Aye.
Gilletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
No.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Five nine to six. Nine to six, and those have it. Is there now a motion to, we have original motion by Alderman Schmidt, who was the second on that originally? Alderman Ridgewitz, to approve the zoning board of appeals advisory report in case number forty-eight, and have the proper ardent drawn. Is that what the motion is?
Yes, sir.
You accept that, Alderman Rand, oh, so Ridgewitz? We have a motion, and we have a second. Any additional comments? Yes, ma'am?
Alderman Randall asked a number of excellent questions based on the zoning board's findings, specifically what, what rule they were using, what, what studies they were using. I have never heard the answers to those questions. Did you hear them?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I do not feel that the zoning board effectively worked through all of these questions. I feel like I'm getting an incomplete item. I also would like to refer to the zoning board of appeals, meeting minutes for July twenty-fourth, in which it's, is stated by the TDL member there, there will be no modifications made to the interior of this home. Because the city of Belleville has adopted the Boca codes, we are required in group homes to put other things in. For them to clearly state that they do not intend to follow our ordinances, I feel for that reason, we must vote no on this.
Okay, we have, Alderman, you have something else you're saying?
Yeah, I think that, while I am dissatisfied with respect to the form that the zoning board uses, okay, to pass along the recommendation to the city council, the issues that I take with that has to do with the proposed special use would have a positive effect on the value of neighboring property on this municipality's overall tax basis. I don't know how they can make that determination in advance. I'm not sure what criteria you would use in order to make that happen. Yet still, I believe that the issue before us is one of zoning. Is this permitted? Is it a special use that is permitted under our zoning laws? And I believe it is. It is also my opinion that this issue, okay, brings in the Fair Housing Act, and that brings in the Department of Justice, and I don't think we really want to go up against those people again. We don't have a great track record there. So I would prefer, okay, that we vote on the issue as it stands, which is a zoning issue, and a special use permit for a CILA, Community Integrated Living Arrangement, that is permitted under the Fair Housing Act, and is permissible under this request.
We have a motion, and we have a second, to approve case number forty-eight, and have the proper ardent drawn. Roll call.
Kinsella.
Hold it, real quick. Aye, a yes vote is to approve, okay? Just want to clarify. So many votes here.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
No.
Gilletti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
No.
Schneider.
No.
Nine, nine-six.
Okay, I'm sorry, still same vote, nine-six. Okay. Motion carries. We go now to the ardent. I'd ask for a motion to read ardent seventy-seven ninety-nine by title only.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kinsella. Any further discussion on the ardent? All in favor of reading ardent seventy-seven ninety-nine by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance number seventy-seven ninety-nine is zoning ordinance regarding case number forty-eight, July fourteen, TDL Group Incorporated.
Motion to approve ardent number seventy-seven ninety-nine.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by.
Second.
Alderman Schmidt. Discussion further? Roll call.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
No.
Gilletti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
No.
Schneider.
No.
Still nine to six.
Yes, same vote.
Ayes have it. We move on to miscellaneous and new business.
Oh, you didn't ask for any unfinished business.
I'm sorry?
Unfinished business, you didn't ask to any more.
Is there any more unfinished business?
I have a question. I thought you were going to talk to IML about getting somebody here to do parliamentary training.
And we have, I have made an initial call. They indicated at one point to Garrett and I that it's available at some of the seminars, they're going to check, get back to me, there's some in the areas occasionally, and there'll be some at the IML convention.
Right, which I don't think anybody is going to this year because we're having a big celebration.
I understand that, so I, I will have to check back with them. It just, I'll be honest with you, it has been a very busy couple of weeks, and I have not.
I understand, but clearly at the previous meeting, we had some issues about parliamentary procedure, and I think we could all use a regresher course.
Okay. Alderman Hayden?
Yes, your honor, I would like to know, mayor, this morning, is it true that you were on the phone with a member of your appointed staff, and that appointed staff had called into the police department and created a distress call in and around eight o'clock that basically had six police officers responding to city hall as if it was almost a terrorist situation with lights flashing, et cetera, that could have put people out on the street in danger, as well as people within the building because of an issue that you stated was a concern within the city clerk's office, which is a separate elected office than yours? Did that happen today?
Yes, it did happen today. I was there.
And all that should have caused an accident, I mean.
Hold it, hold it. Alderman Schneider, I did not, Alderman Hayden still has the.
I'm asking, this is not a legal question. I'm asking if the incident happened, because if it did, which I need an answer to, to know what course of action I want to recommend and request next.
Okay. First of all, I was not here this morning at the time of the incident, with the concerned question, okay? An employee called me and, and asked, because there's been a debate going on for some time, but I think we're going to have to go into executive session to talk about the issues dealing with a grievance filed, and, and possibly other issues that go along with this, so I would prefer to go into it with executive session and explain further right off the bat.
The points that I'm raising is, is a, a police call, your honor, which is subject to FOIA, and the way it was related in, in false pretense, this is an issue that I believe seriously needs to be investigated by the police department. We could have seriously, your honor, let me finish, I've got the, we could have seriously got people hurt getting here from off the streets, as well as anybody in, there, there's people that's had heart attacks during situations like this because they think that there's a, a bomb threat and things like this, and this is the way it was put across to our police department. This is wrong, and it needs to be investigated.
And it is being investigated. And I think Mr. Cook knows, and he heard from the police chief, and the city attorney, and I, and the assistant police chief this afternoon in my office approximately four-thirty, that there will be a report taken tomorrow, and there will be an investigation as to going into detail of exactly that occurrence. Okay. I will just tell you that I was not there at the time it happened, so it's also basically somewhat hearsay for me, like it is for you. So it is being investigated. Chief Clay must have stepped out, but Chief Clay, Chief Sparker's still here, and is that not correct, Chief Sparker? It's going to be looked into tomorrow, and at that time this afternoon at four-thirty, when we were all together, we all agreed that that would happen tomorrow.
And will we?
What? Alderman Holt, are you talking? Are you, are you butting in, or are you a part of this, are you asking?
And, and, and who's going to receive this report? I would like to see this report.
Well, and you know what? That'll be fine. I think.
Because it gives me, mayor, I need to know, then i, i, if I can accept this report, you know, a, and all the others, you know, that, that are basically, you know, appointed staff by you, you know, interfering with what I believe is an appointed staff of another elected office, because if, if, if there's abuse of power, then it has to be a third party or another entity looking into this matter. And it is the responsibility of people sitting here, your honor, that is in the legislative branch, that is supposed to provide the checks and balances over the executive branch, as there is supposed to be checks and balances between your office, the city clerk, and the city treasurer.
And I think when we get to executive session, you'll get a clearer picture. Okay?
And I want my comments noted in the record.
Well, I'm sure they will be. Alderman Schneider?
Excuse me. I also would like a copy of the nine-one-one call to come in, and the code that was used for that many police cars to use their sirens and lights, they're all parked out here, it's a busy time of the morning. It could have caused accidents because, well, I won't know, and so I can't say until I get a copy of the nine-one-one call. What code did these officers use to come? I mean, and was there not memos sent out on this?
Yes, three.
There was memos sent out, and they all know this person to say, and this is, I guess, hearsay, an unidentified person behind the counter? Why, with all what's going on in Ferguson and that, we, God knows what the dispatcher or was told, and that these officers used what code to get here. They could have had an accident, just like in today's paper. There was, no, I'm talking, that there was a report of a, we already had a police officer that put the car in a ditch a couple of weeks ago, responding to a call. This, this was five car? I seen five, so I might have counted wrong, but this is, well, we could have used those officers on the street somewhere else. And we're all saying we need all this extra security here. This, I want a copy of it, and I concur with Alderman Hayden, that this needs to be looked into because there was memo sent out that this person would be here.
Can I add, I want a copy of the nine-one-one call, too?
Well, and if you'd like, I could address and explain the whole situation in, in front of the public, because we should, I believe.
Well, that's what it should be.
I can explain exactly what happened.
Please do, because I still have the floor, I yield to you.
If there's an, if there's a, an ongoing police investigation, I would recommend that you await the results of that investigation before you publicly comment, especially if it involves an employee. I think that that is.
Well, that's why we're asking for the nine-one-one call, a copy of it.
And let's give the police a chance.
And I think it's already been indicated that you would get a copy of the results of the investigation, but the importance of that is they're complete. This would not be subject to FOIA or otherwise because it's an ongoing investigation, and that's just my recommendation at this point.
Alderman Holt?
We are in effect asking the police department to partially investigate themselves. I believe the best thing to do would be to ask an outside agency to oversee this whole investigation, both the city employee and the city police department.
Well, I agree, considering, you know, both entities are appointed by the mayor, as is the chief of police, and the appointed staff who made that phone call, while in her other hand was the cell phone with the mayor on the other line. So I don't think we'll probably get a fair investigation, it'd be very difficult. So I, I believe you're right, and that's what I would suggest as well.
Ask, does this be on the next agenda as well for potential discussion of motions?
Alderman Schmidt?
I would just like to say that I have full faith in the integrity of our police department and the investigation, and if they do an investigation, they can bring it to us in executive session at the next meeting, and we don't need to be jumping up to outside investigation investigators.
Mrs. Schmidt, I just want to answer that because.
Hold it, hold it.
She's accusing me of saying the police department won't do their job, and that is not at all what I intend for.
I will call on you, we're not going to start just jumping in here.
Okay, I guess I can raise my hand.
Yes, you will. Ald, Ms., Alderman Schmidt, are you done at this time?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cook, I will recognize you now, but we'll follow this.
The truth is, from this morning's incident, the police handled it more professionally than you can imagine, considering the phone call that came in, into their, their desk. They did a fantastic job. I have all the faith in the world in Chief Clay, but however, a human being needs to have a job, and when you're appointed by somebody, and they're the only one who holds that job over you, it'd be very difficult, even for me, to go against that person, you know, considering, you know, and so in order for all fairness to be done, not anything against our police department, just so that Chief Clay doesn't have to be in that situation where he could possibly be going against the mayor, where the mayor could see legal trouble with interfering with my office, we should have a separate investigation from somebody not involved the city and not appointed by the mayor, and that's simply what I'm saying. I think we have the best police department in the state.
Alderman Schneider?
It's not uncommon for another agency to be brought in.